To order, it is approximately 1:07 PM on Thursday, July 18. Welcome to everybody in attendance, in person, or of course, in Southern California, or virtually, or on the phone. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Mariah, please call roll.
Commissioner Fiona Ma.
Stephanie Tom for Treasurer Fiona Ma.
Commissioner Jose de Huellet.
Greg Young here, representing Commissioner Huellet.
Commissioner Helena Gonzalez Riza, here.
Commissioner James Hickin.
Here.
Commissioner Byron Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Manisha Pudhi.
Here, online.
Commissioner Virginia Verella, present.
Thank you, we do have a forum. Sean, let's move forward with the public comment instructions, please.
Yes. For those of you joining us via phone, welcome. You're currently in listen-only mode. If at any time you're disconnected from the conference call and wish to rejoin, please redial and enter the same participant code. There are public comment periods. If you wish to make a comment, please press one and then zero. We will hear first from the attendees joining us in person, and then from the callers taking the order they join the queue to speak. You will hear a message when it is your turn to speak, and once you are done speaking, we go back into listen-only mode.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to remind the attendees joining remotely to please mute yourselves until you need to speak. And we ask that all attendees who are going to approach and provide public comments, please do first state your name and indicate whether you need a translator or speaker. Particularly, when asked to comment or answer any questions. Public comments on action items and general comments on other matters within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the meeting agenda will be limited to two minutes per person unless an interpreter is required, in which case four minutes will be allotted. Also, commissioners, please do state your name before making a comment or motion. For those on this phone call in line, translator, please translate. Translator, please unmute.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría recordar a los asistentes que se unen de forma remota, que se silencien hasta que necesiten hablar. Aquellos que deseen hablar o comentar, por favor indiquen si necesitan un traductor. Pedimos a todos los asistentes que primero digan su nombre antes de hablar, especialmente cuando se les pide que comenten o respondan alguna pregunta. Los que desean traductor, les pido que hablen en oraciones más cortas y permitan pausas entre cada oración. Los comentarios públicos sobre elementos de acción y comentarios generales sobre otros asuntos dentro de la jurisdicción de la comisión que no están en la agenda de la reunión se limitarán a dos minutos por persona, a menos que se requiera un intérprete, en cuyo caso se asignarán cuatro minutos. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two. This is an action item. It's an approval of the minutes from the June Blue Ribbon Commission meeting. Are there any comments or edits from the commissioners? Seeing none, are there any public comments from those in the room or on the phone line or attending virtually? You have zero questions remaining. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Jim Hickin, I so move approval of the minutes stated June 20th.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Greg Young, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Stephanie Tom.
Aye.
Commissioner Greg Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Helena Gonzalez Riza.
Aye.
Commissioner James Hickin.
Aye.
Commissioner Byron Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Manisha Pudhi.
Aye.
Commissioner Virginia Verella.
True.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. Moving to Agenda Item Number Three. This is an update and a final report from RAND. The Cal County Blue Ribbon Commission has invited RAND to join today's meeting to provide a presentation on the Cal County Market Study and Feasibility Report. Welcome to Jonathan.
Thank you.
Wanted to make sure you've had a large audience here today.
That's a great audience. Let me try.
For those attending remotely, we are bringing up the slides, so we appreciate your patience. Apologies for the technical difficulties. We will bring up the slides, we're just increasing that expectation, and there we go. Okay.
Okay.
Jonathan, you're up.
All right, perfect. Thank you all so much for having me here today. I was excited to come back, to join you all and present our findings here. Okay, so here's our slides here. And I'll point to the fact that we have a link to the report on the slides as well. But for those of you who I have not met yet before, I'm Jonathan Lawber, and I'm a senior researcher at RAND. At RAND, it used to be RAND. So, senior researcher at RAND, and I am the principal investigator on the Cal County Market Study and Feasibility Report. Joined here with a couple of RAND colleagues, Dr. Robert Bozek as well, who's been our project director, and Elizabeth Marks Lay, our project manager, who's been here. And, you know, as well, for some of you might be less familiar, we're representing RAND. So RAND is a nonprofit, nonpartisan research institution whose, you know, really, our single commitment is to providing policymakers with the strongest available evidence and unbiased analysis to support decision-making. And we've been headquartered out of Santa Monica in Southern California for the past seventy-five or seventy-six years. And so that's essentially what we've aimed to do here is to provide that rigorous analysis to support decision-making around Cal County and really thoroughly documenting our approach and our methods such that they meet the standards of reproducibility and very clear to everybody about how we've come to our, you know, findings and recommendations. I also want to say that, you know, thinking about us and this team for Cal County, really, there was twenty-four of us, RAND researchers and analysts, that contributed to this, along with four internal and external peer reviewers, who, okay, who've helped us provide, oh, thank you, the quality product that we've sent to you all. And that, you know, this also extends to many outside of our organization, which includes the almost 1,000 respondents to our survey, the numerous subject matter experts that agreed to sit down and interview with us. As well, I acknowledge the State Treasurer's Office, including Treasurer Mark, who has leadership in his general commitments to find solutions for marginless Californians, to Deputy Treasurer Tom, who's here, as well as Deputy Treasurer Henry, for their guidance and advice and good questions throughout this process. Obviously, Mariah as well, who's here for all of the work that she's done during this process. And of course, Cassandra, who's been, this leadership execution is essential. And also acknowledging the advisory committee, who's provided us plenty of input, as well as all of you on the Blue Ribbon Commission, for good ideas, good questions, which I hope will continue through our briefing today. So please don't hesitate to stop me and ask questions along the way. So, next slide. If you're aware of the context for our report and findings, that the California Public Linking Act of 2021 called for this feasibility study, and RAND was selected to do that. And to fulfill this, our approach has been to analyze the landscape for banking in the state of California, to conduct a survey of unbanked and underbanked Californians, to examine the feasibility of the Cal County program and its components, and to analyze benefits, costs, in the long run, impacts associated with the program and potential policy options for implementation. Next slide. We'll start here with a landscape of banking options and the landscape of banking in the state of California. Next slide. So through call reports, through public data, through our use of a secret shopper program, which we call Banks Around the State, we have collected a data set on a new exhaustive list of banks operating in the state. That includes 418 banks, 153 of those are commercial banks, 265 of those are credit unions. On the margins, I'll note that this does not include some banks that may be operating in the state but don't have branch locations. Capital One's an example of that. There's a cafe down the street from our office in Santa Monica. It's not a branch location. And we found a lot of really interesting things to share with you all. And, you know, I'll say this at a high level, and in general, you know, throughout this briefing, trying to go to a high level, there's a lot of, you know, evidence that we did find. So we happen to go into detail for the course of the reports, so much of it. We found that Californians in cities have good access to bank branches. We'll talk about this a little bit more on the next slide. But we also found that, you know, there's some limits to this, where in rural populations, especially for Native American populations in rural California, there's more than good access. We found that traditional banks pose a range of fees, including minimum deposits, so fees requirements, including minimum deposits to open accounts, monthly service charges, overdraft fees. We also found that non-bank alternative financial services poses, which in fact, many people do rely on in the state of California, they pose potentially high transaction costs. And we can provide all these a little bit more insight on these in the next slide. So, our analysis of the banking landscape in the state of California starts at the physical presence of, as spoken, 418 branches operating, sorry, 418 banks operating within the state. You can see this on the map located here on the left part of this slide, where we're showing the 5,629 branch locations of banks and the 1,567 locations for credit unions. The banks are in the yellowish color, not gray. The yellowish colors and the purple are the credit unions. So those are kind of displayed across the state. We're also showing the population density at the zip code level on this, where the darker shading represents the more dense zip codes throughout the state. And visually, you can see that those below 7,000 branch locations tend to cluster towards the more dense areas of the state. However, we didn't want to leave it there. Our analysis, which you can also, of course, you can see in detail in our report, is largely statistical, and we go down to, you know, much more refined geographic areas using census tracts, where we can estimate the distances between these branch locations and the population by demographic. Using that, we found that there's a strong correlation between the population count and branch density, with commercial and credit union bank branches largely located towards, you know, the major population centers in and around major population centers like Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, or right here in San Francisco. We found that most Californians who live in cities have good access to physical bank branches, specifically about a quarter of the population that lives in cities resides more than one mile from the bank, and only 4% resides more than two miles from the nearest branch. So a lot live pretty close. We did a comparative analysis across demographic groups, showing that there are only small differences across minority groups living within cities. It's potentially counterproductive. But we found that, so this is roughly 30% of black, Hispanic, Native American populations in cities reside more than a mile from the nearest branch, and that's in comparison to roughly 25% of white or Asian Californians, Asian American Californians living within a mile from their branch. So there's a difference there, but it's just not one that we saw very large. That does not mean that disparities do not exist. We found that banking access is notably more challenging in less densely populated parts of the state. And this is particularly true for these rural Native American populations, where nearly a third resides more than 10 miles from the nearest branch, and 10% live more than 20 miles away from the nearest branch. There's also a couple of things to note here. First, we don't mean to draw false equivalence between the physical access to banking services and access to the full range of banking services. Notably, and here's where we could cite a 2022 study published by researchers at the Roosevelt Institute, which sent canvassers around 106 bank branch locations across the state of California to analyze whether there were low-cost banking options that are available in the state were made available to prospective clients. And they found that the majority of customers were not made aware of these accounts, in fact, and that there were significant disparities across minority groups. You know, amongst those canvassers who were turned away, they found that 30%, 40% of those are Spanish-speaking, while only 4% were white. So there actually, equal access doesn't mean equal access. And this is, you know, what we've generally found is consistent with the literature. While we didn't replicate this, we did use a secret shopper program, which I talked about, where we called around to different banks to understand banking fees. And I think one of the things that we can find is that, you know, it wasn't a trivial process. It took us time, took us effort. And so if Californians are looking for the lowest-cost banks, this is at least something that has put them to actually search for those kinds of options. So next slide. When we look across the data set that we were able to construct during this study, we see that Californians do face a range of fees from traditional banks and alternative financial services. Here on this chart, we're showing averages, or specifically the median, fees posed by banks, banks and alternative financial services, banks in green, sorry, and alternative financial services in orange. For the sake of simplicity, I'm just showing the medians here, but there's full distributions associated with our report. I'm happy to talk about that as well, because they really do show that there's quite a range of fees across banks and alternative financial services across the state. Some of these, some banks are on the low cost, but they're kind of skewed towards, you know, most posing some cost. On banks, most credit unions, and the vast majority of banks, require minimum deposits to open bank accounts. This isn't shown on the screen just because it's not a fee, but this median value for banks is $100 and $20 for credit unions. Of course, many banks do offer ways of waiving this requirement, but it is, you know, one of the barriers to access. Most monthly, sorry, most bank accounts do carry monthly service fees. Here you can see this in green, where this average across banks is $2. And I'll just note that that does tend to be higher for banks and for credit unions. The vast majority of banks do charge overdraft fees and non-sufficient funds fees. This is a median of $29, and 95% of banks charge fees above $15. May be obvious, but just in comparison, because, well, these are all dollars, they're kind of different units. That's not a, you know, monthly fee of something that's a quote of transaction. That's an overdraft. So in fact, the overdraft fees can be quite cumbersome. And as we'll discuss later, when we talk about the survey data, that our survey is suggesting this is the leading reason why really unbanked Californians do lack access to banking. Second, the FDIC classifies a household as underbanked if a member of that household does have access to a checking and savings account but regularly uses alternative financial services. So we wanted to better understand these alternative financial services and their associated fees. And here's where we collected data from non-bank vendors of check cash and money orders and money transfers and prepaid cards across the state. One thing I'll note is that this 418 banks, there's a lot more of different businesses in this industry. There's over 6,000 check cashers, 5,000 money order businesses, 9,000 money transmitters, 1,000 sellers with prepaid cards, and 1,000 sellers who issue travelers' checks. So our analysis of this was not exhaustive. Instead, we selected a random sample of non-bank institutions that provide these services, and that are registered with the California's check cash program. We obtained a random sample of general purpose reliable cards as well from the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau's, the CFPB's, prepaid product agreement statements. And here's what we found. Check cashers tend to charge an average or median of $2 for a $100 check, equivalent to a 2% transaction fee. Money orders cost an average $1% transaction fee and often carry limits on the size of money orders, often around $1,000. Prepaid cards, which are one of the years, carry a range of fees. This includes a $2 fee for ATM withdrawals, a $5 fee for the average, for cash reloads, a dollar average for balance increase, a $3 average for inactivity fees. And these fees can also include monthly service fees and even per purchase transaction fees, often with some limited transparency around transaction. So those can be quite costly. Next up, please. So, to understand the, and please do interrupt. To understand the financial management practices of unbanked and underbanked Californians with the goal of assessing their receptivity towards potential Cal County, we analyzed data from the 2021 FDIC National Survey of Unbanked and Underbanked Households. We also introduced a new survey. It's called the RAND Survey of Household Finance. I acknowledged this earlier, but we exceeded our target goals, reaching roughly 1,000 unbanked and underbanked Californians, which includes a sample of 77 migrant farm workers. And that last point's notable because this population is typically excluded from surveys due to a lack of permanent housing. And we were able to reach this group by working with a nonprofit that serves migrant farm workers to include respondents. Total, this is likely the first in a couple of years. Next slide, please. So excited to share some of our findings from the survey with you. Like other sections, just I'll note that, you know, our findings are extensive here. I'm just presenting these to the high level, but we can go into more detail. We started by analyzing the FDIC survey data, which shows that 5.1% of Californian households are unbanked and 13.9% are underbanked. And then analyzing FDIC survey data, we can see disparities across groups. There's racial and ethnic disparities, where unbanked and underbanked rates of non-white households are roughly double those of white households. Hispanic households have more than twice the unbanked and underbanked rates of white, non-Hispanic households. We can also see them across marital status and location. So married households have lower unbanked and underbanked rates than unmarried households. Households living in urban areas and metropolitan statistical areas have lower underbanked rates than households living outside of them. Conversely, we see that unbanked rates are higher for households living in these areas than those living outside of them. And the most significant disparities exist across incomes, where unbanked rates for low-income households, which are defined as households with incomes under $30,000, meaning income is six times higher than non-low-income households. Underbanked rates, underbanked rates for low-income households is nearly double that of non-low-income households as well. In building on this, we were able to use data from the RAND survey to understand the underbanked population, unbanked population in the state of California. Here, we found that not having enough money for an account, preference for cash, the minimum balance requirements were among the top reasons that banks, that people are underbanked, underbanked. We found relatively low levels of interest in opening a bank account within the target population, which might be, again, too. Even when that includes Cal County features. Specifically, we found that 47.5% of unbanked respondents are not interested. 25% are somewhat interested, 11.9% are very interested, and another 14.7% responded they didn't. We find that the two features that are most likely to increase, or to be, yeah, to increase the likelihood that people are interested in opening an account, such as Cal County, would be features of the lack of minimum balance and access to a physical location. Majority of the underbanked and plurality of the unbanked reported that with these two features, they would likely consider opening an account. Across the board, however, underbanked households were considerably more likely than unbanked households to open an account regardless of the scenario that we presented. And notably, there was no scenario in which the majority of unbanked households were likely to open an account. This is perhaps amplified by trust. Where in our survey, we could also see that there was a lack of trust, or lower levels of trust amongst unbanked Californians in the banking system, as well as in government, which are both two challenges that would be present here. Next slide, please. So here, presenting data associated with that first point, these are the top reasons, or reasons that were listed by more than 20% of survey respondents for not having a bank account. And some of these, like minimum balance requirements, fees being too high, or fees being too unpredictable for credit history, I think these are issues that can be addressed by Cal County. And some others that include the need of cash preference, trust, privacy, or not knowing how to manage or open an account, a challenge which is closely related to financial inclusion. Sorry, financial literacy. Some of those are issues that may not be directly addressed through the Cal County program components as they presented. On these components, there's no question, there's not questions. We're going to the next slide. So our next part of the analysis was to assess the feasibility of these Cal County components. And we did this based off a review of legal documents, of relevant literature, interviews with subject matter experts from banking, from academia, from legal community, and from groups representing stakeholders. Next slide, please. As the headline introduction to this section, we found that most features are feasible, at least technically, though somewhat to existing products. There are a few challenges, which I want to mention to you all today. Concerns over profitability for partnering banks was a through-line across our interviews, our literature review, our formal analysis of benefits and costs. Closely related, we saw that perceptions of illegal liability risk can pose some challenges. As suggested by survey data, there are challenges for enrollment in meeting sufficient levels of uptake as well. And this is closely related to trust. Like this. So we can talk about the feasibility in a little bit more detail here. So we've gone through each of the features mentioned, and you can hear on the slide, detail to understand potential concerns over feasibility from the state. And to summarize this at a quite a high level. For the feature of individuals who lack state or federal picture, federal picture ID or unhoused ages 14 to 18 can enroll, we did not find major feasibility concerns. Of course, identity verification is a, is a problem for banks with significant federal regulation laws that come from the Bank Secrecy Act, knowing customer requirements, and present real consequences, including fines and jail time for banks and bank employees who violate it. However, given the ability for banks to develop customer identification programs that accommodate a lack of domestically issued or federally issued state IDs, we actually think this is feasible. Ultimately, we think this, especially this customer identification program is up to the implementation plan and we would be involved with the party bank. So I think there's, you know, limits for our ability to assess this because it depends on detection. But, you know, additionally, feasibility may be aided by other state municipal programs, like San Francisco has to issue IDs to California restaurants. Zero fee, the zero fee and zero penalty feature does have some concerns. And this is where we think that offering zero fee, zero penalty accounts at scale may not be viable from a bank's perspective and thus provides potentially little incentive for banks to offer and promote these accounts voluntarily. And this may require additional incentives, potentially for bank participation. For providing federal insured accounts, we don't see any real challenges for feasibility. For connectivity with state and local government programs, we find no major technical feasibility concerns. However, you know, a couple of things worth mentioning here. Fraud issues and other government programs tie to like the importance of investment fraud prevention technologies. And additionally, process challenges and government coordination exists that can make things difficult even if they're technically feasible. We find no major concerns with the peril direct deposit feature. And for the registered payees, we think that from a practical standpoint, certain entities could resist this, but that's such a only challenge, a concern with feasibility, it's just an interpretation. And finally, we find no major feasibility concern. Funds transfers for deposits, rent, and no major feasibility concerns over the down.
All right, I have a question. But then the feasibility, feasibility concerns, but the zero fee, zero penalty. Was there like a survey done, because I know there was about like the cost of maintaining the accounts, like these kind of accounts, but is there like anything done or is it not possible to do like, like an average of what the banks are making like for profit? Like possibility to maybe address like what that would be or future offering that to banks?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we come at this from a couple of different angles. So, sure, still talking about, you know, some of this can, so there wasn't a survey on this to answer that question. But some of this does come from our interviews with people in the banking industry that do talk about it. Some of it comes from literature, which does talk, which does mention, just for example, bank on that banks aren't incentivized to actually promote this, you know, one of the challenges. So even if it does exist, it's kind of similar, most of the study, you know, voluntarily promoted. But we also see this, you know, more to your question, through our analysis of benefits and costs, where we are kind of looking at the costs associated with accounts for banks. And that can start suggesting profitability. I'd have to go back and see if we have specific measures of profit, but that's going to vary by behavior after. To say, but I think that's where we see that the cost of maintaining account is not zero. So having no fees does catch some costs for the banks. But I, I'm going to get into that.
Thank you.
We'll pause at this point, given the question, commissioner, additional questions from other commissioners at this point. Okay. Right, listen to me.
All right. So I think that's a great segue into our analysis of benefits and costs. So we did this as requested by the State Treasurer's Office. We conducted the, the analysis of benefits and costs associated with Cal account. We designed this to conform with the requirements of the structured regulatory impact assessment, which would be needed according to California Willmaking Regulation establishes the Cal account program. And as a result of our analysis, generally follows California's guidance for economic impact assessments assessed by, established by the Department of Finance, certified in California code, regulations, and the state leadership. It also adheres to the federal guidance and best practices for government agencies conducting regulatory analyses established by the Office of Management, but not be circular for. And I'll just add that, you know, while I'm no expert on the details of benefit cost analysis we're pulling from folks on the team who very much are. And if you have detailed questions, we're happy to provide a bit. In fact, some of our team members recently published a guide for conducting state regulatory fact analysis in California. So there's a lot of resources to kind of go behind this sort of idea of questions. And in our annex material, I'll say that all of the input and clues are there documented in the sources of your questions. Next slide, please. There are several details about, just before we start, that are yet to be fleshed out about Cal account that end up having important implications for the, for the actual values of benefits and costs for Cal account. So, you know, early on in our, in our analysis, our approach here, we started scoping out regional options for implementation. And I presented this to you all in early stages in the interim findings back in February. These are, of course, these have meaningful implications for both benefits and costs. So, so we'll talk about them separately. There's the first option, which includes mobile banking home. This is really, this is kind of a minimally sufficient way of implementing Cal account. And as a result, comes with, you know, low expected enrollment. And that's, we're doing these expectations on enrollments using survey data as well as cases from other relevant, other, other similar programs. In this mobile banking, only access to a robust, it includes access to a robust and geographically expansive ATM network, which is, you know, a program requirement with, but with limited, no access to efficient banking. Option two builds on option one and adds existing brick and mortar financial locations that exist within the networks. Given the data from the RAM survey where we saw that physical access was one of the things people wanted, this does come with, you know, a higher level of expected enrollment. Option three builds on this option, option two and one, and provides expanded network of brick and mortar locations. This involves either building new brick and mortar locations or accessing, using existing facilities, existing government facilities, talk about more recommendations for, to support evolving branch activities.
Question.
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit more about option three, maybe explain it more later? But when you say expanded brick and mortar financial network, it includes additional geographic locations. But are you anticipating that they would be staffed by bank personnel or credit union personnel or outside employees or how would they, would it be like an adjunct to the brick and mortar bank system?
So, I mean, this, this itself has a range of possible answers. And by that means we're trying to say one is better than the other. But we did assume that they would be staffed by personnel. And we had, you know, estimating wages associated with that. Whether those are state of bank employees, I think can vary. But as far as the cost, we just had those with, you know, average staffing cost. We also had, you know, added security that maybe required a few years as far as staffing cost. So, so we did have, we did incorporate those. There are creative solutions that we talked about in the report to, by somewhere over between two and three. The way these can be non-permanent satellite branches to keep prices low, cost low, as well as even, we talked about this as a more of a mobile bank branch, which could sustain the page from vaccine, well, during pandemic, where you could have something goes out to different parts of the community to provide you services. So I think we had different approaches. I can't remember the exact details of, you know, how much they were paid or something like that, but it is also meaningful.
Well, I, I saw in the report, I was, it wasn't clear to me who would be staffing.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Who would be bearing the risk of security, you know, knowing the customer regulations, the banking regulations.
Yeah, I, I do think that's a good question for implementation. When, no, I think that would be up to the volume.
Jeff, if I may, with another question. In these three options, and it references the ATMs, which is the obvious origination of being able to get cash. Is this suggesting, and either or relative to the access to the ATMs, one of the traditional ways being strictly the ATM networks through the ATM card only, the others through debit cards, which also write the Visa, Mastercard, or Rails. Both of them distinctly have different benefits, some greater than others, but they have extremely different liabilities attached to them too for the banking environment. So is this, is this just a general statement on ATMs, not focused on specifically how to access the ATMs?
Yes, I, I do think that there is an assumption that you own the Visa, Mastercard system for that part. And, yeah, I think this is a general, you know, general assumption of accessing, you know, ATM networks to, you know, whatever the party in banking, whatever networks, they're part of. There's details on fees as well associated with that. One of the other things is I thought you were asking to ask is that the type of ATM matters. And we did explore that as well of whether or not it's a limited service, a full-service ATM. Some of the full-service ATMs got a lot of the bridge. But they carried additional costs and liability and security. Is that, is that the answer?
Kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah, it's, it is the, and, and part of it in correlation and, and in the stuff that was talked about with Bank of America, they had the contract with the EDD for the payroll and the amount of fraud that they anticipated related to that. And that's all related to the debit card and the rails it writes on them and the, all the compliance rules behind it. So that may very well be one of the considerations that has to take place. But I think the challenge it's going to bring into play is that may limit the number of institutions that really want to go down that path because of the expense regulatorily and financially.
And by the institution, you're referring to potential partnering banks that want to participate.
I'm sorry.
You, you're referring to potential partnering banks that want to participate. Yeah, I, I, I think that's something we completed. You said a lot.
When you go to the incentives for and profit for banks, did you look at interchange fees because you were looking at, and so what, how does that balance out with the potential profit or loss of profit from overdraft fees and other fees?
Can I show you the next slide?
Sure.
Yes, so we, so, so here, when we're looking at option one, this is, this is just to give you a general overview and then I'll get to your exact question. What we're showing here is the costs and benefits associated with this option. Going towards the left are the costs in orange and extending towards the right are the benefits in green. And we either analyze this over a 10-year horizon, just to, things to get to steady state. And the, after, after implementation, but here we're presenting annualized values. You can interpret these at the point of value, which is another couple of notes on how to interpret everything on the screen. What we're seeing is we put all these things in 2023 values, which is also a nod to the fact that at some point in the future, somebody will pick up this report and these values can be updated by just extension. The, we looked at, we, we kind of took everything into five main stakeholder groups, being state government, retail merchants, individuals, banks, which will answer your question for them. And then the alternative financial services also operating in the state. So what we're seeing here is that the state does have costs associated with the program implementation and operating, operation. Expected, and then as option one, you know, it's an annualized value that we estimate to be values. That is well for retail merchants because of interchange fees and the increased use of debit cards. We were estimating that it could be cost that these retail merchants are facing. And we estimated that are on deep values for this option. Also note that, that, you know, we, we do have discussion, there's an annex of the retail merchants and maybe some benefits associated with reduced cash slippage by switching over to, to debit cards. It's hard. Individuals, we do expect to have some costs associated with just the value of their time in, in registering for your account. Which is quite small in comparison to the large annualized, estimated annualized benefit of 272 million for individuals who are receiving Cal account.
Sure, can you break down that 272 million, what does that come from?
The 272 is largely coming from avoidant fees, avoidant transaction costs associated with, you know, the underbanked population encounters the fees or the unbanked populations pay transaction costs. Of course, it's an estimation, it depends on how often people use the card.
That's huge.
Additional questions?
You may be getting, she may be getting at this already, but was there a consideration of the trends in the regulatory requirements? I think I saw in a footnote in the report about the CFPB. And they're really kind of trending towards requiring credit unions and banks not to charge fees. Like, for example, the bank I work at, no longer charges fees on recent represented items. A lot of NSF fees that are kept by banks. And this is coming right from you guys in the telephone survey. So if you wait a month or two, the fee structure may change. But the, the analysis was based also on interchange fees. And there's also inter-agency guidance right now that is restricting interchange fees. So it might really change the benefit and cost analysis that you're doing. So I wonder, what, I, I, you know, what, if you could comment more on, what would be the incentive for banks to participate in this program? Because I'm not sure the fee structure will outweigh costs of fraud, costs of security, regulatory, etc.
Yeah, I mean, so I, let me just say, you got one step ahead of me and then I'll practice. Just, just to note that, because you, because you're talking about, you know, something which is here, which is that the banks do have those costs associated with operation fraud, which we wrapped up into the numbers on the screen. And then the benefits that we're showing here do come from both the, you know, the ability to lend on new deposits as well through interchange fees. So the reduction of interchange fees through potential future legislation. I mean, we took everything as given right now, so entirely right, Virginia. That in reductions, interchange fees would eat away at the benefits for the party in the bank. You know, that, obviously that has facts across the board in the benefit cost analysis, but that's the biggest effect that you get is it's just reduces that incentive. We, I can't remember, this might be subtle, the way that we talked about the overdraft and NSF fees, but that's where we said, you know, 95% of banks would still have a, have an overdraft fee above a certain level. I think we were trying to nod to, you know, maybe those are the. I think we're trying to nod to, you know, maybe those are the future values, right? You know, if it's $15 or something, things you kept everything that still applies to the vast majority of banks in the state. We try to choose those numbers associated with future legislation, sticking to ranch rules and not counting. So hopefully that helps a little bit. So I, I mean, I think it, those things which do undercut interchange fees do take away.
Yeah, it's just that in the future analysis, you guys are doing a phone survey because it's really hard to access.
Yeah.
The information on fee structures, banks don't publish that readily a lot.
Yeah.
And it's hard to collect it from the regulators. So I understand the issue of trying to collect that information and you guys have done a great job, but there's also pending legislation that could really transform that cost.
Yeah, I think that's right.
I, I would say that that pending legislation could transform, uh, the ways and, the ways in which currently fees are being collected. But it's my experience, I'm looking at the history of fees collected by banks, that they transfer NSF fees to other ways. So monthly fees go up. You know, the, the, the banks will find ways to collect fees if not in one way from one, from, from NSF fees to monthly fees, they're going to make profits one way or another. So I think it's, it's, it's safe to say that, um, they're going to find, they're going to find a way. And it's important to be able to, uh, to understand that, uh, as we move forward and try to capture, you know, fee free accounts. And, and try to make these affordable for all people.
Sadly, a lot of the banks may just close the accounts. They're not getting fee structure, which is sad, because that's not what we want.
Absolutely. Another reason how to make Cal Count.
Yeah, wait, just two last comments on this, on this slide. You know, one, we do show the, the alternate financial services, they, they have losses. Obviously they have costs. As people, if people would definitely go away from using the services. But you know, just thinking about these questions, I, I do believe that the future legislation might change the change the picture. However, it might not change our finances, uh, and our recommendations. I, I don't think as far as what we see from that. So next slide, uh, this is when we're looking at option two, and just to, I can do this quickly. But really what we're seeing with option two is this just expands costs and benefits as the uptake increases. Um, and the cost of implementation of outreach, uh, does as well. So you can see that's high cost for the state, you see higher the high cost of banks associated with this. Now we have 70 million benefits for. So for the next slide and option theory, this is again just expanding these more as we get higher outreach, higher cost for operations, the expanded bank network. And so these costs of state scale as well, the cost of merchants and individuals too as well. But this benefits from the digital scale, possibly with some slight decreasing margin gains for the individuals. But, um, you know, there's still some stuff. One thing you might observe here is that some of the costs are transfers. There's a cost related to retailers, um, are, are trans, the cost related to retailers are transfers to participating banks, interchange fees, the cost of banks, alternative financial services, uh, also transfers to lost fees. And I'll come back to this. Next slide please. So you can compare all three of these options in terms of their, uh, estimated annual net benefits on this slide. And in all these options, we find that under our analytic assumptions, the benefits are likely to outweigh the cost over a 10 year, uh, horizon. Net benefits are highest under option two. And now there's, I mean, there was some risk here of enrollment numbers do fall, these net benefits decrease. But some kidding targeted. Notably, the societal benefits of the program accrue primarily to unbanked and underbanked Californians, which we're seeing in the past couple of slides. While participating banks would benefit from increased revenues associated with, um, the questions of banking as well as interchange fees. To increase debit card usage essentially. Uh, and in turn, the state may also have some benefits, right, from revenue sharing agreements if those do happen. The primary impact of the program would be a significant income transfer, which I was just talking about in the last slide. Um, from banks and alternative services to unbanked and underbanked households. Specifically, the avoidance of fees, um, would reduce industry product for boosting household disposable income. I should say reducing industry. The, uh, the, you know, we estimate that participating in Cal Count on average would save individuals between $700 and $800 a year. We also estimate that, you know, unbanked, and this is kind of a cross. That unbanked and underbanked households would increase their overall precautionary savings by approximately $15 to $1,200, somewhere in that range. And this level of precautionary savings would have a significant impact on financial being for marginalized populations and ease the burden of financial security. Traditionally, this might be overlooked and, uh, benefit cost analysis, because it's a transfer and essentially nets out in this chart to, you know, negative for one and it's a positive on the other would be zero, uh, zero impact in this chart. However, given the distributional impacts associated with Cal, with the Cal Count program, we conducted a supplementary analysis analyzing distributional weights. Distributional weights are intended to allocate investments where they provide the greatest impact on social well-being rather than where they maximize economic efficiency or provide the greatest return on investment. Using the estimated weights for the unbanked and underbanked populations, we find a positive net benefit across all scenarios. Furthermore, when we use these distributional weights, um, this kind of changes the ranking of policy options a little bit. Here, we look at net benefits, option three is first, we look at the, um, use distributional weights. We see that option three actually yields the greatest net social benefit compared to option two. Which suggests that using distributional weights to inform policy decisions here prioritize increasing enrollment over relative cost effectiveness of Cal Count. I also want to mention that in addition to increases in household savings, our analysis, uh, shows the Cal Count would significantly reduce the disparities that I mentioned earlier using the FDIC survey that existed across racial, ethnic lines, across, um, you know, MSA regions and across various. Kind of probably doing justice to the things that we discussed in the report, but there's, there's a few other types of benefits that. Next slide. All right. So our analysis has included this deep dive in the landscape of banking in California. This survey of unbanked and underbanked Californians, our assessment of Cal Count programs, these features and feasibility implications and analysis of benefits and costs and long-term impacts. That's what this was several key takeaways to share with you all, a few recommendations. So we've found that most features of Cal Count are feasible, though it's technically speaking, and similar to existing products such as banks. Doesn't mean that they're easy, that doesn't mean that they're costless and that doesn't mean that they want to cover challenges or coordination, coordination across the agencies.
I, I have a question about Bank On, because you've mentioned a couple of times in the report. So the Bank On program is currently out there, uh, at least a few banks are involved. It's a federal program. It hasn't been hugely successful, if, if I could say that. It's very similar to the Cal Account program. Why? Oh, someone's shaking their head that it's not. But from the standpoint of not, uh, charging fees, et cetera, why hasn't it been, why hasn't it caught on more? And what challenges can we learn from the Bank On program that would make Cal Account more successful?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's probably a range of opinions, uh, to answer your question. I, I would cite, you know, a specific study, like the Yale Law Review that we cited in this report, that banks have just not incentivized to prioritize Bank On, sorry, to, to promote Bank On, to offer Bank On to respective customers. That's the large part of the challenge. They argue that the Cal Count, we're just sticking with that, that reference. Cal Count is overly promoting these services.
So couldn't we take the Bank On program just? What's the?
I, I think that's possible. I, I can't say for sure that would work. There's a Bank On plus that could be an option.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, we, there, I mean, it's interesting that your report talks about the lack of trust in the government. But I think, um, I think there is an actual benefit of having a public-private partnership with government and a, a, a bank partner. And I think the most important thing that your report brings up about a potential, what is going to make this the most successful program in enrollment is with community partners and trusted partners that can make this successful. I think Bank On does not have a baked in community partnership, um, you know, trusted partner program. And I don't think there's a way to do that. There's so many banks that, that are involved in Bank On. There's no interest in working with trusted community partners to make it successful. There's no, and I actually would say that the banks are not interested in making it successful. I think, uh, the state of California would have interest in making this, this program successful. I think the partner that, uh, the banking partner that would finally, um, get chosen to work on this program would have interest in making it successful. And I think most importantly, the community partners that are trusted, um, to help with enrollment would have a huge interest in making it successful. And I think ultimately that will make the difference between, uh, the, the failures that Bank On has ultimately resulted in and what a successful program Cal Account can be.
If your additional questions or comments before Jonathan, who is just posing thoughts?
I would just say that from a banker's perspective, I'm not sure what the incentive will be in the Cal Account program. It's different from the Bank On. I, I don't know what it would be. I'm not, I'm not sure we captured.
Well, I think that we, um, we do talk about incentives in terms of, um, you know, um, some, um, some, you know, interchange fees that we've talked about. Um, I think that needs to be worked out in implementation in terms of what that potential benefit could be. And I think, um, I think that's where we're at right now. Um, and I think we're going to have to bring, we're going to have to really, um, figure that out as we look at implementation. But I think, um, I think Bank On hasn't worked. If it had worked, we wouldn't be at this table and now trying to figure it out. And I think this is a real problem for the state. I think we're talking about, you know, in terms of the numbers that we've just heard, we're talking about a huge transfer of wealth going in the opposite direction, going from poor people, working class people into the hands of banks versus, you know, the other way around, where these, if these dollars could be going to working class people to put food on the table back into the economy. And it's a real shame that that's where we're at. And so, uh, so I think we have to solve for that problem. And we have to figure out the incentive for a bank to come to the table and, and really solve for this problem. Otherwise, we're just throwing our hands up in the air and talking about wages for working class people going into the hands of law street banks. And I think that's a real shame.
I think I just want to add, um, I do understand the perspectives both from Paulina, of course, and Virginia, because there's a natural inclination, given the interest that this commission has, to now start to move forward toward an implementation study, which is a recommendation of Rand, because we want to have a better assessment of what will work. Definitely on behalf of the Treasurer's Office and our State Treasurer Fiona Ma, we have a vested interest in seeing this work. And having an idea of what options will be best. Uh, and Virginia, actually, I'll say personally, I'm with you as far as, you know, there is an existing infrastructure, right? What worked and what didn't work, is that something that we can leverage? But also understanding there are key components that we're missing from, obviously, because it did not succeed. Um, and so again, that's why there is interest and that's why I know that Rand is recommending an implementation study. And it would not necessarily be one study, it would be a study that would cover various options. Um, and that's something that this commission will have to assess and think about as far as the next steps moving forward. Other questions or comments from the commissioners on this?
I have a question, I should have asked this earlier, about prepaid cards. You mentioned prepaid cards are highly popular amongst the underbanks. And I was wondering, given the way in which we're talking about Cal Count, um, you know, having direct deposit, being able to be used, you know, to, to, um, have, you know, transaction ready. Um, I'm wondering what we can learn about the way prepaid cards work that could potentially transfer to the way Cal Account can be used by consumers?
Yeah, uh, we, we could, you can switch to the next slide, because we're just talking through the recommendations. And in, we start with this implementation, this, this recommendation, implementation study. There were some details here, which we loosely talked about in the report. They're relevant to this, but I think we can kind of expand on that and just discussion, um, for a minute, because I think the, the details matter a lot on the ways that, uh, the Cal Count program is constructed and implemented, uh, and the ways in which incentives might be aligned and adjusted the way it kind of addresses some of the bacon challenges. There, there is a model, uh, that has been tested and done in a couple of different use cases where there's a role of fintech, uh, who can be that sort of first layer that consumers interact with. The customers interact with and they work with a FDIC insured partner bank. This has been done to the city of Los Angeles, uh, similar. I think this has some features which might look and feel similar to prepaid cards, but there's a, there's a bank account. And there's a sort of model where they're, uh, meshing together different, different companies, different fintech companies with the bank to provide services, to provide access to ATM networks, to provide, you know, um, the direct deposit features. That, that's a model that can be looked out, but I think there's a lot of detail to. And, and that might help with addressing some of the incentives challenges. But again, there's details there. We, we also had a couple of other recommendations, just to run through quickly. But, you know, we, we recommended this to be implemented with instant payments. This, this is, this is a relatively new thing, it was in the States, um, that, that where the, uh, the fellow we started with introduced FedNow. And we kind of noted that, uh, it would be, uh, yeah, we recommend that Cal Count be if it, if it is appointed to be done so. On FedNow, that allows for payments to be instant or very fast. And, well, Cal Count is just cash management, it's not credit. We think that that actually can help with, you know, some of the customer needs to, um, access payment. Payment terms. A third is that we recommend the, uh, the use of low-cost options for in-person banking services. So, you know, we had started talking about this. Surprised that the two regular commissioners got into details, um, about the, uh, you know, IT, type of ATM networks, um, the use of ATM networks and branches that might suffice for some, um, unbanked and underbanked households. And there may be options for new locations. We even, you know, annexes, and I can point people to this, we even talked about like where some of those should be. But, you know, there's uses of existing government facilities, um, that are state or municipal or even post offices that might be able to offer some of these services in partnership with the, uh, part of the bank. Perhaps on a non-permanent basis, and I did mention this moment, banking concept, where we think that you can, you know, accomplish some of those option three outreach, uh, levels without having where we think that you can, you know, accomplish some of those option three outreach levels without having the cost of.
The Fed just put out a study saying that the amount of low income minority customers out there that don't have access to broadband services really diminishes the amount of access they have to pay services. Is part of the, when you cited that the unbanked have a distrust of banks, was there any kind of analysis in your survey? I didn't see it of whether or not phone services or broadband services would increase the amount of financial services out there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think those are good questions. So, you know, one, I, I would hope that financial inclusion could be benefited by other federal programs like the broadband equal access and deployment program.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would hope that that would also have benefits exactly what you're talking about. Possibly longer term. And, and I do think this is one of the recommended issue studies to really doubt, trust a little bit more, perhaps the focus, which I think would be helpful to understand where there are opportunities to seek this trust. So we, I mean, we didn't have a specific.
I'll clear on that one. Is there others mentioned in the alternative financial services that like a cash app or Zelle and all that stuff? Like that's, that was included, right? And we're assuming that they would have, have to go on the internet, was that right?
That's right. I mean, I don't believe in most probably more. Even though this is everything, but it needed, I don't know if there's any way of figuring out broadband access. Do you know what she's about the problem?
There's a Fed study that just came up.
Okay, that's good.
I think if you don't mind, as the, as.
Yeah, please, please, please.
There as the former deputy for broadband for the state of California. Obviously, there would be implications. I have to chime in, right? Anyway, I'm still passionate about broadband. And there are implications around digital literacy and financial literacy to this conversation. And again, I think that's a key component to the next step if we decide to move forward with the implementation study. Because it will provide access and that's what it's about. It's about providing access and really reaching all areas of California with that access. So definitely, I'm sure we have implications, but I think that's an excellent point, Virginia, as well.
Well, I'll say the last point, but I'm glad everybody seemed to have been bringing your approach to you and talk about this. But the, the, you, you recommend the use of community partners. I think that's for maximizing that, which is quite important. Cal Count feature. And, you know, on this trust point, this is the game study, but it could help.
Sorry, for the outreach, I don't know if in the report that they, I mean, I think I saw there was something like about $6 million, but, but like costing for like outreach, but is there something more of that to say by kind of suggestions like on the?
Uh, what's with it on the, on the cost or just the strategy?
Uh, the cost, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think we might be a little limited on our recommendations for strategy there. I think we're talking some broadly of working with, you know, state building groups. The cost, I, I believe the way this was done is just, you know, knowing that there would be people who would be doing that outreach, even if they're volunteers, value the time it would take against the average. That's the way to calculate that time. Go to our next slide, but you know, this is just the thank you slide for all the time today. And, you know, I mentioned all the people on the background. This is the list of what Cal Account is on this report.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from the commissioners for Jonathan and for Rand before we move forward to public comments? So now is your chance for the commissioners. Okay.
I have a question. Oh, yes. So when I didn't bring this up earlier, but in the Know Your Customer Rules, the personalized education program, BSA and GML, I know there was some language from the guidance and regulations, but the reality is in banks that the compliance reviews are very strict. We have tests from the federal level about what can be used to satisfy regulatory requirements. And I think my question is that it really does tie into the legal liabilities, regulatory risks and potential fraud, like money laundering. And I just was wondering how that is quantified from the expense standpoint. I, I, it's not really broken out in that table. This is, and I think that could be a huge challenge for the brand.
So, I think those are good questions. They are discussed in annex too. Which, you know, we, we can go back to and have you to answer.
Yeah.
Questions bonus, but the, but we did try to quantify those costs in a couple of different ways. One is just that, I mean, maybe this is partly our limitations that we can't fully understand the, the legal challenges that will exist and that that will be a cost. Both on the state side and the bank side of actually figuring out the customer identification program. But that does have a cost just from a certain perspective, but so we did quantify that. We also did quantify, try to quantify fraud, my building side of that, and the side of our cost of things.
Yeah. The gentleman brought up the cost of fraud, but it's also, you know, like the EDD or PPP program, there's also cost to taxpayers potentially.
Sure. Yeah, we've tried to take lessons from the Bank of America experience. So I think we talked about that.
Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners on agenda item number three regarding the Rand report? Okay, seeing none at this time, we will ask for any public comments specifically for agenda item number three for Jonathan and Rand regarding this report. And before we move forward to public comment, it will be public comment from those in the room. We're starting at this public comment from those in Sacramento and then moving to Los Angeles. Then for any virtually and on the phone. And before that, translator, please translate.
Thank you. Ahora la comisión brinda la oportunidad a los asistentes del público interesados en dirigirse a la comisión. ¿Hay algún comentario público de los que están en la sala? ¿Hay algún comentario público de los que están en el teléfono?
Yeah, in the sala y en el teléfono. Thank you, seeing none. Thank you so much to Jonathan and to Rand. We will move forward to agenda item number four.
Sorry.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm, I think we're not clear. Public comment is in relation to the report and the name of the program. Actually, so for this section, apologies for any confusion. Right now, we're requesting public comment specifically for agenda item number three, which is the update from Rand. So we will hear public comment from those attending in person or virtually or on the phone. Rand report. For the Rand report. And then after our final agenda item is number four, which is general public comment. And we will follow the same flow with public comment in person, first starting in Sacramento, then in Los Angeles, and then virtually, and then on the phone. So for right now, if there's any additional or if there's any public comment regarding agenda item number three as a Rand report. And for those attending in Sacramento, I believe there is public comment. Please approach in Sacramento, state your name and organization, and we're happy to hear your comment. And a gentle reminder that please keep it to two minutes. If you need a translator, then you can have four minutes. Any public comment regarding agenda item number three regarding the Rand report? Welcome.
Good afternoon. You be okay?
Yes.
My name is Dr. Glale Sawa, and I work with the volunteers, the California Banking Alliance, as well as the Sacramento Banking Efforts. And I wanted to mention that specifically Cal Account will provide tools for financial stability to California's most vulnerable residents. This Rand report, which mentioned that the unbanked households would save from a range of around $1,200 annually. And this would reduce racial ethnic disparity. $1,200 savings annually over 50 years would be over $370,000. As to the benefits of Cal Account, an HRNA study found that it would result in savings for low income households. It would expand access to credit building tools for marginalized communities, create 2200, 22,000 jobs and augment the California economy by 4.2 billion. The only sectors this would not support would be exploitative policies, exploitive bank policies and payday lenders. Please support Cal Account.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments for agenda item number three, which is regarding the Rand report specifically?
Other comments?
Yes, for the Rand report, please approach, state your name and organization.
I'm a member of the Sacramento Environmental Justice Coalition and a member of Rice Economy. So we're in full support of the Cal Account system. We just came from a camp right now where we have unhoused people who do not have access to the banking system. They make $800 a month of SSI. And then when they go to a bank, the fees that they have to pay are enormous for their account. So we definitely support anything that can help our unhoused folks. Here in Sacramento County, we have 39,400 people in public assistance who claim homelessness. We know that that somebody who claims homelessness gets less food stamps. And so when they go to a bank to process their fees or whatever, they're losing money and food. So this is something that we definitely want to support and encourage everybody else here to endorse. Thank you.
Thank you. So I know that we have a lot of people here in support of Cal Account, which is fantastic. But I do want to make sure if there's additional questions regarding the Rand report, please do come forward. Otherwise, we will move forward to the next agenda item, which is general public comment in support or against Cal Account. So any additional questions for Jonathan specifically? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Academy of Financial Education. And my question for you is, with the transfer of wealth going back to the individuals, potential for the transfer of wealth goes back to individuals. Was, in your survey, was it asked what those individuals might do with that extremely? Because I just wanted to address some comments that were made here earlier about why banks might be involved in this. I think that banks will, they make a profit, people will find a way to spend their money. And I think that if they're going to be able to retain their wealth a little bit longer, they may be able to get funds and, which will bring them back to the banks anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for agenda item number three regarding the Rand report? Either in person in Sacramento or Los Angeles, or attendees virtually or on the phone? Okay.
You have zero questions remaining.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jonathan. We will move forward to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number four. It's our final agenda item, requesting public comment. And so this will be general public comment regarding Cal Accounts for the commissioners. And we will start with public comment for those attending in Sacramento. If you would like to, please approach and have public comment. Just a gentle reminder that we are limiting it to two minutes per person or minutes if you need a translator. I, I do have one second. Okay, great. And thank you for that organization, Cassandra. She will call each person in Sacramento to.
Samuel Molina?
Okay. We're good?
Yeah.
All right, again, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samuel Molina. I'm the family CEO for the Academy of Financial Education. We are a Central Valley-based nonprofit organization dedicated to closing the wildcat in our community by providing person-centered comprehensive financial education via classroom instruction and individual mentoring. Today, I joined my colleagues in support of establishing a no fee, no minimum balance account. At a time when inflation is high and families are struggling to make ends meet, we must do everything in our power to reduce erroneous fees for low income families, ensure that, and ensure that every dollar is maximized to its fullest potential. Additionally, the threat of climate change and its impact on food prices will increase costs well into the future, making financial stability even more critical. As an educator, I've seen firsthand the damage these fees cause to families. Many parents are forced to use check cashing institutions, which charge significant fees for their services. For example, last year, I met a young mother who shared with me that each time she cashes her check, she pays $11 in fees. Cashing a check on a weekly basis means she pays nearly $600 in fees each year. That money could be better spent on food for her family, covering rent or transportation costs. In addition, both our rule and justice impacted communities are often preyed upon by check cashing places. These predatory institutions keep wealth for themselves and increase the likelihood that their customers will remain in poverty. Every dollar spent unnecessarily as fees is another dollar not reinvested back into their families or communities. This is why we advocate for the Cal Account, no fee, no minimum savings account. Cal Account provides a much needed alternative to just, to traditional banking, ensuring that low income families are not burdened with excessive fees. By offering a no fee savings account, we can help families save more of their hard earned money, allowing them to invest in their future and improve their financial wellbeing. With Cal Account, we can take a significant step towards financial equity, reducing the economic strain on vulnerable families, empowering them to build a more secure, prosperous future. For these reasons, the Academy of Financial Education urges you to move forward and developing the Cal Account program. Thank you.
Next up, I have Glale Sawa.
We're good.
Next up, Andrea Noble.
Andrea Noble? Okay.
Paul Henderson Senior? Mona? Monique Mossy?
Hello, Dr. M. Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Mona Mastroi. I'm Economic Security California Action, an organization dedicated to building an economy that works for everyone. We advance policies that put money into people's pockets and guard against the forces that take that money out with a focus on distorted and dysfunctional markets that harm people, workers and communities. Almost no issue illustrates the harmful impact of distorted market banking. And here I mean specifically, a lack of access to banking for the one in five California households that are unbanked or underbanked. We believe that no one should be, should have to pay for the privilege of having access to their own money. And that's why I'm here today to support the Cal Account, which will ensure that everyone, regardless of income or location, has access to free banking services. We strongly endorse the findings of the report. We find that Cal Account significantly reduces disparities in access to banking services for Black and Latina, Latino, low income Californians by reducing those disparities around 20 to 30% or more in some scenarios. And specifically, products like the Cal Account can help strengthen local economies by helping Californians keep more of their money instead of paying costly banking. Establishing a Cal Account would mean that low income households no longer have to rely on costly alternative financial services such as payday lenders, prepaid debit cards and pawn shops. These unbanked and underbanked households pay proportionately more for their financial services, often lack savings accounts, have fewer opportunities to build credit and face increased rates of loan rejection. And additionally, investing in public banking will generate broader benefits to the community, including providing more investment in affordable housing, increased access to capital for small business. increased access to capital for small business owners of color, greater investment in climate resiliency, climate disaster recovery, and clean energy transition projects. It also makes the market more competitive for everyone by providing an alternative to for-profit banks, by providing a public option for financial services. And once connected to safe legitimate and government-provided banking, there may be potential for synergy with other government services, such as claiming tax credits or receiving other benefits. Finally, and importantly, the report finds that Cal account is in fact feasible, which means that hopefully the state of California will not delay moving forward. The unbanked and underbanked need access now. We believe the Cal account is a valuable product to help more unbanked and underbanked individuals gain access to safe, affordable, responsible financial services, and also helps to build the infrastructure. In California, we need to have a more inclusive and equitable economy for all. So, we encourage the commission to move forward in improving the development and implementation of the Cal account program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug McPherson?
Good afternoon. Doug McPherson with the California Public Banking Alliance. I will repeat the great points that were made by the previous speakers, but 20% of our fellow Californians, unbanked, underbanked, and paying these egregious fees is terrible, and I fully support the California account. I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aliyah Shaheed?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Aliyah Shaheed, and I'm an organizer with Rise Economy. I'm here today to speak in support of Cal account. Both my personal, both in my personal life and in my work, I've seen the need for better financial inclusivity. Some of my earliest memories of a child are me walking to the store to cash my grandmother's monthly check because her neighborhood in southeast Stockton did not, and still to this day does not have the presence of a bank branch for at least a three-mile radius. In that neighborhood, this is just one of the elements that contribute to people being unbanked and underbanked. But financial deserts are not the only reason. Many accounts have super-high fees that often eat up at people's paychecks, especially working-class people where every dollar counts. These extra fees mean less money in families' pockets and our economy, and more money in the hands of corporations. I also want to uplift some comments from one of our members, Sharon Kinlaw, who is with the San Fernando Valley Fair Housing Council. Although she cannot make it here today, she wanted me to speak to the importance of having financial services that take in consideration the plight of seniors and people with disabilities living on fixed incomes. The COVID-19 pandemic has severely impacted things like rent payment, and many landlords now require rent to be paid online, which means that folks have to have a bank account in order to pay their rent. If these families are underbanked, that means that they're often piecemealing together finances in order to make rent payments, and they use a combination of banks and high-cost alternatives. Many unbanked, vulnerable tenants still pay their rent in cash, which often leads to eviction due to a lack of paper trail. Growing up, when I was walking to go cash my grandmother's check, I did not have the language of unbanked, underbanked, or financial desert to understand or give me language to what I was experiencing. For me and my family, this was just a normal experience that many people in our community still navigate to this day. But now, I do have more understanding and more knowledge. And most recently, this feasibility study has been published that makes it very clear that Cal account is needed to support unbanked and underbanked Californians, and that the benefit of this program are greater than any cost, and it's a worthwhile investment for the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Chi?
Hi, my name is Sylvia Chi. I also work with the California Public Banking Alliance. And I'm also, my other hat that I wear is as a senior policy analyst for Justice Solutions. Justice Solutions is an environmental justice organization that provides policy and research capacity in partnership with community-based organizations on the front lines of the climate crisis and in support of the environmental justice movement. One area we focus on is resilience and recovery in the context of climate-related disasters, including extreme heat, wildfire, floods, landslides, hurricanes. And I want to highlight how Cal account can improve outcomes for vulnerable communities, both before and after climate disasters. As I'm sure we're all aware, many communities in California are at high risk for a variety of climate disasters. And low-income communities and communities of color are both disproportionately vulnerable to climate disasters and less resource to recover from them. A report released last year by the U.S. Treasury Department, "The Impact of Climate Change on American Household Finances", highlights access to financial services as critical to the challenges facing households impacted by climate hazards. Climate disasters also cause income disruptions for many households, adding further strain to households' finances. Communities that are disproportionately employed in certain climate-exposed sectors, such as agriculture, construction, manufacturing, and tourism, are more likely to be lower-to-middle income and people of color, and are particularly vulnerable to interruptions in their employment income. For households that rely on safety net benefits like publicly provided housing or food assistance, interrupted access to public benefits can result in further strain on their household finances. And while credit cards can provide an affordable short-term option for some households to manage expenses related to climate hazards, a 2021 FDIC survey found that unbanked and underbanked populations are less likely to have a credit card and more likely to use costly alternatives like payday and pawn shop loans. The Cal account program directly addresses the root causes of these challenges by providing improved access to basic financial services, especially for the populations that are most vulnerable to climate disasters. This improved access to financial services will not only improve the household finances of vulnerable households, it will provide the needed financial infrastructure to access and receive disaster recovery assistance. For these reasons, I strongly support the Cal account program as an important tool to assist our climate resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we call up the next public comment, when you hear that very gentle, subtle sound, that actually is the time of a two-minute mark. And we do want to hear everyone, and I do see some hands up virtually, and there may be some comments on the phone as well and in Los Angeles. So, thank you for your patience. We do want to hear everyone, but we are going to keep to the two minutes. Thank you. Next up, please.
Sandra Johnview?
Hola, mi nombre es Sandra Jauri. Vengo de Sacramento y trabajo en Jack in the Box.
Translator, please translate.
I'm sorry, it's gonna be the translator who is virtually? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I will be translating. There's no interpreter.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Señora, puede volver a repetir su presentación para que pueda tomar nota?
Sí, con mucho gusto. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sandra Jauri. Vengo de Sacramento y trabajo en Jack in the Box.
Hi, my name is Sandra Jauri. I'm coming from Sacramento, and I work at Jack in the Box.
Tengo cuenta en el banco de Wells Fargo por más de doce años, y he tenido muchas problemas cuando voy a agarrar el dinero al ATM porque me cobran un cargo de tres dólares cada vez.
Okay. I had an account at Wells Fargo for already 12 years, and I had a lot of problems withdrawing money from the ATM because I receive or I take $3 as charge every time that I withdraw money.
Cuando tiro un cheque que no tiene, como no tengo lo suficiente, me cobran 35 dólares para, por no agarrarlo, para depositarlo, y porque no tiene el dinero suficiente en el banco.
If I write a check that has not enough money in my fund, I receive a charge of $35 because of that.
Pero cuando voy a la tienda y agarro comida para mis hijos, para mis nietos, esta tarjeta no pasa porque está negativa, y también cobran 35 dólares porque pasé la tarjeta sin los fondos que ellos quieren.
Sometimes when I go to the grocery store to buy food for my kids, for my children or my grandchildren, if I don't have enough funds, my card is declined, and the bank charged me like $35.
También cuando tengo un... tengo que tener una cuenta como de 5,000 dólares en la cuenta de cheques, en la cuenta de ahorros, para que no me puedan cobrar los 10 dólares que me cobran por cada mes.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna request some clarification to the caller. Estos 10 dólares que le cobran es por mantenimiento, señora?
Por cada mes cobran 10 dólares.
Okay, sorry. So, if I don't have $5,000 between my checking account and my saving account, I have to pay $10 monthly as a fee for maintenance.
Tengo que tener una cierta cantidad para que no me puedan cobrar esos 10 dólares. Son doce años, es un dinero el que yo he dado al banco. Que yo pudiera pagar otras cosas, como llevar a mis nietos a comprar algo, a un paseo, a camping, y pues no los tengo, no puedo.
Because it's a lot of money during 12 years that I have this account, I have never had enough money, those $5,000, to get rid of the charge. So, you understand that during all this time, I spent a lot of money for those charges, and I could use that money, let's say, to pay a trip for my grandchildren, you know, camping, something like that. But I have to pay monthly this amount.
Entonces, en representación de todos los, las personas de California que nos cobran tanto dinero, tantos cargos, este, yo les agradezco su apoyo para que podamos tener un Cal account, porque sería un beneficio grande para nosotros, y pudiéramos hacer grandes cosas con ese dinero que nos están robando prácticamente. Muchas gracias por su atención.
So, on behalf of all Californians that had to pay these charges, these fees for the commercial banks, it will be really great if you can give us this support, granting us the possibility to have a Calable account. So, I could, well, all the people, we could save that money that is actually stolen for us from the commercial banks. So, thank you very much for your attention to this matter.
Guillermo? Guillermo?
Buenas tardes, necesito traductor. Mi nombre es Guillermo Nakal. Trabajo en San Jose, California, en comida rápida. Yo tengo una cuenta desde hace 22 años en el Banco de América. Anteriormente, el Banco de América no cobraba, si uno tenía cierta cantidad, menos o más. Ahora el banco está cobrando 10 dólares o 12 dólares. Si tenga usted dinero lo suficiente o no lo tenga. Entonces, yo les dije, pero ahora, ¿por qué están cobrando si ustedes dijeron que cuando íbamos a manejar el banco por la línea? Y ya no íbamos a usar táctico.
Señora, señora, le voy a pedir que haga frases cortas para que yo pueda traducirle, ¿ya? Espéreme, hay un momento, por favor. La voy a traducir lo que usted ha indicado, ¿ya? Hello, my name is Guillermo Nakal. I live in San Jose, and I work in fast food industry. I have an account in Banco de América 22 years already. In the past, the bank didn't charge us any fee for our accounts. But now, they are charging $10 or $12 regardless how much money do you have in your account. So, ahora sí continúe, señora. Me quedé diciendo que le cobra 12 dólares independientemente del dinero que tenga. Continúe, por favor.
Por esa razón estoy yo ahorita aquí para apoyar a Cal account, que tengamos nosotros las personas que tenemos bajos ingresos.
So, that is the reason why I am here now, supporting the idea to receive this help for the people like me that we have low income.
Por ejemplo, mi esposo es una persona de 75 años, retirado, no tiene suficiente dinero, y él tenía una cuenta en Chase.
I will give you an example. My husband is a 75-year-old retiree, and he doesn't have enough money. He used to have an account at Chase Bank. Okay, continue.
Le llegó una carta en donde le decían, de ahora en adelante, te vamos a retirar 10 dólares de tu cuenta si no tienes dinero.
So, he received a letter from the bank stating that if he doesn't have enough money in his account, he will be charged with $10.
Entonces, yo le dije, ve y retira tu dinero porque dentro de poco ya no vas a tener nada.
So, I told him, go and withdraw all your money from your account, or in no time, you will lose all your money.
Entonces, él me contestó, entonces, ¿qué voy a hacer? Le dije yo, oh, pues vas a tener que volver a la antigua. Vas a tener que volver a guardar tu dinero abajo del colchón.
Well, he told me, well, what I can do now if I close my account? Well, I told him, well, now, you will need to do it as in the old times, keeping your money under your mattress.
Y ahora él, donde quiera, dejando su dinero, y me pregunta, oh, ¿no sabes dónde dejé mi dinero? Porque no sabe él, o sea, dónde lo deja, lo deja por todos lados. Por eso yo estoy aquí, porque nosotros los, los que tenemos, mayormente los hispanos, que tenemos bajos ingresos.
Okay, so, now my husband is asking me all the time, where is my money? Because he forgets where he puts his money. So, this is a problem. That's why I believe that all the people, especially Hispanic people who has a low income.
No tienen, no tienen lo suficiente para tener una cuenta en un banco. Entonces, van a las tiendas de licors, y yo conozco a muchos trabajadores de esos, en donde les cobran hasta un 2% por cambiar sus cheques.
That is Spanish.
Okay, so, I know a lot of people who doesn't have a bank account. So, I know that there are many of us that go to those liquor stores where they charge until even 2% of every check that they want to cash.
Thank you.
Gracias, y apoyemos a que tener una banca segura para todos nosotros. Somos Cal account. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you very much, support the idea to have Cal account for everyone.
Thank you. Fernando? Thank you. While we're calling Fernando, the next up is, please, Cassandra.
Fernando.
And after Fernando is Galen Davis. Okay, Galen can please be ready to approach as well after?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fernando Valencia. Yo trabajaba para McDonald's. Vengo de Livingston. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fernando Valencia. Yo trabajaba para McDonald's. Vengo de Livingston. Yo quiero contarles lo difícil que fue para mí abrir una cuenta de banco.
Señor Valencia, ¿en qué ciudad me dice que vive?
Livingston, California.
Modesto. About this, okay. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Fernando Valencia. I work for McDonald's and I live in Modesto, California. I just want to speak out regarding how difficult it was for me to open an account.
Vengo a apoyar a Calcom porque... Es algo que necesitamos porque la verdad es muy triste tratar de abrir una cuenta de banco y le pongan a uno muchas trabas. Yo llegué a ir a una sucursal a querer abrir una cuenta de banco, el cual me pedían, pues principalmente papel con tu domicilio. Por esta razón no me la daban. Llegué a ir a otra sucursal, lo cual a veces me hacían una cita, yo me emocionaba, ahora sí me la van a dar. Me tenían una hora haciendo papeleo, llenando papeles, firmando, el cual al final del tiempo me decían que me faltaba mi seguro social. Por eso no me lo entregaron.
Well, I'm coming to support Calcom so we could have a Cal account. The thing is that it's so difficult for people like me to open an account. I went to many branches, bank branches, to open an account, but they asked me for proof of residence. Other times I have, I had some appointments, I got excited. Situation that always happen.
Okay. Can you re-translate that last portion, please? We had a technical issue on our end.
Okay, no, no problem. So, I have gone many times to different bank branches trying to open an account. Sometimes they just reject me because I couldn't produce proof of residence. And other, other times I had an appointment, got very excited to open an account, but after a while, staying at the branch, filling out a lot of paperwork, they are telling me that I cannot open an account because there is a social security number missing. Adelante, señor.
La verdad, sentí el rechazo, el rechazo por ser parte de esta economía, porque ya no es que uno quiera ser parte, sino que ya lo ocupamos. Este, para mí, la verdad, moralmente es, fue algo, pues triste y la verdad, los trabajadores no merecen ser parte de esta economía.
Well, I felt rejected as not part, as not being part of this economy. But you know, we have a place in this economy. We produce. And morally, this is difficult for us. It's very sad. And we, the workers, deserve a place in this economy.
Yo cambiaba mi cheque se pequeñas tiendas, el cual a veces me cobraban veinte, quince dólares cada cambio de cheque. En ese tiempo yo no tenía auto, el cual me tocaba pedir Raitte y pagar otros diez a quince dólares cada que cambiaba mi cheque. En ocasiones me tragaban el cheque en la tarde, el cual a veces uno, ni tenía quien me llevara, ni tenía tiempo para ir. Al otro día tenía que estar temprano trabajar y la verdad, también no, no podía ir a cambiarlo.
Well, look, I used to cash my checks, my payment checks in these corner stores, you know, that they charged me ten, fifteen, twenty dollars for cash my check. When I used to do that, I didn't have a car, so I needed a ride and paid other ten dollars for that. So sometimes I received my paycheck in the evening, so I had no time to go to the store to cash my check. And the following day, I start to work very early in the morning. So it was really difficult for, for me to deal with this. It was very difficult for me to deal with this situation.
Thank you. Up next, we have Galen Dawes. After Galen, we will have Amy Everett.
Había días que yo tenía mi cheque hasta dos días.
Señor, ha concluido su tiempo, ya no podemos continuar, le vamos a dar la palabra a otra persona. Yeah, I already explained the speaker that his time is out.
Thank you. Amy Everett? Oh, I'm sorry, Galen Dawes. I lost my.
Good afternoon. My name is Galen Dawes. I'm a policy analyst for the California Coalition for Rural Housing. We are one of the oldest state low-income housing coalitions in the entire country. I am here also as a Rise Economy member, but to point out the direct relationship between equitable access to our financial services industry and being able to retain housing, especially in the state of California. A few years ago, there was a financial inclusion forum hosted by Travis Credit Union. And it was the president and CEO of the Salon of Black Chamber of Commerce that had a comment that has always stuck with me when it comes to access and specifically Cal accounts and banking access for our communities of color. And speaking to the Financial Services Editor, she said, "If I don't see me in you, I don't see you." And I think Commissioner mentioned that when it came to trust financial institutions and why people would opt out of using them. And I think that's one of the things that Cal account could actually get over. It's one of these very difficult barriers that I do believe they can get past. Finally, once again, very avid support of Cal accounts. Thank you.
Amy Everett. After Amy Everett, we will have Charista James.
Good afternoon and thank you for having me, Commissioner. My name is Amy Everett. I am a president of Golden State Opportunity. We are an organization statewide in California that works to create financial security for low-income worker. And because we see limited access to financial security, the difference greatly impacts communities of color and low-income workers, who are the people that we work with. It is a primary reason, one of the main reasons, that we support Cal account. Every year, GFO helps about 3.4 million low-income Californians claim about 1.3 billion dollars in our Cal Earn Income Tax Credit Program and about 7 billion dollars from the federal tax credit program. And I can tell you that in California, no one really wants, well, probably universally, nobody likes to do their taxes. Jonathan talked a lot about trust and about the need to build trust in the communities that we're talking about that are impacted by being unbanked or underbanked. We build that trust. We have an infrastructure already in California where we have the experience and the knowledge of how to reach people through a network of trusted community-based organizations, through ourselves, where we directly talk with over 2 million people via text every year, unique individuals. We have a coalition. We have our Community Connect Coalition of over forty groups that are out there in the community, helping people know about and file their taxes. I think filing your taxes might be right up there with the fear of opening a bank account. But we manage to do it every year. And we also have another coalition called the CalITC Coalition, which is over fifty-four organizations that are dedicated to helping people claim these credits and get involved. And I talk about tax credits because we are returning billions of dollars to people every year. And the challenge is, is that eighty percent of Americans have direct deposits. The twenty percent who don't, that's who we're talking about. The twenty percent of folks who are low-income, they're highly mobile, their housing insecure, and having their checks wander around the mail system trying to find them, that represents food on their table, paying their utility bills, being able to pay down the credit card debts they needed to have because they're not making enough to make ends meet. Cal accounts could solve a lot of those problems. When people can claim their credits there and get a Cal account, it helps be the door into their financial security. So we are very much in support of this program. We would like it to make it less expensive for people to be poor in California, and Cal accounts can be a key part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Charista James, and after that, I have Constance.
Thank you for having me. I'm Bernard at Walmart. My union sister, Charstina James, she couldn't, she had to leave, so I'm gonna be speaking from her words. My name is Charstina James. I'm from Sacramento. I'm a long-term healthcare worker and I'm a member, a proud member of local SEIU 2015. And then I ask any challenges faced. Currently, I am currently experiencing multiple charges related to a fraud that I experienced last year. If I had resources like Cal accounts, if I had access to resources like Cal accounts, I wouldn't have to rob P to pay Paul to make it through every month. I support Cal account and I urge you to move forward with making it a reality for all Californians. Thank you.
Thank you. Constance. After Constance, I have Jennifer Holden.
Good afternoon. My name is Constance Hill. I'm with SEIU 2015. I'm a in-home support service or caregiver provider. I completely agree with everyone that has stated regarding Cal account. I'm definitely in for that. The reason being, from my own personal experience, I have experienced baking with commercialized bakes. I left commercialized bakes primarily due to all the additional fees. It doesn't seem like I was, you know, really getting ahead of the game, you know, trying to save. You know, between checking, it's always, you know, monthly fees. You don't really get the support that you really need. Sometimes I feel like you're just a number. But I transitioned over to, to, excuse me. I actually, I transitioned over to credit union. And what I'm starting to find with them, to me, sometimes I feel like it might be a hidden agenda. I've been with a credit union for quite some time. What I have found is that they charge for just about everything. So I feel like, sometimes I feel like I'm not really getting ahead. So with this particular credit union I've been with for more than several years, you know, I'm about to, I'm gonna close it because I just feel like I'm not getting ahead. So I just feel like, you know, there really shouldn't be like no big I, no little u. I think that we all matter. And I think that, you know, I work hard, just like everyone else, and I would like to see my financial grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Holden?
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Holden. I am an advisor for the Sacramento Environmental Justice Coalition, which is a member of Rise Economy and a strong supporter of the Cal account. This is a great opportunity and a relief for the elderly and the disabled who can't afford living with less than a thousand dollars per month. So that's, that's my official hotline. But I'm also a community leader in South Sacramento, just ten, fifteen minutes south of here. This downtown area contains phenomenal wealth and access to resources. But if you take a car ten, fifteen minutes south of here, you are in a resource desert. That includes no grocery stores, except for the odd AMPM, no banks, no pharmacies, no medical care. Most people are struggling with transportation. Maybe there's a car, but maybe they are limited to the bus. They are out there trying to get to resources outside of their communities by bus and car sharing. So when we're talking about costs, and I hear people talking about the cost to them in banking, I completely support that and I understand that, but I want to underscore another aspect of the costs. The time and the money that they spend to get access to banking services outside of their own community. On a level maybe none of you have ever seen, there is a library in the South area that hosts a weekly crafting circle for ladies. And as a community leader, I have been to that crafting circle to sit and listen to the ladies explain their lives and talk to me. And the effort it takes for them to get to the library in their own community to be a part of that crafting circle is phenomenal. We don't really think about that enough. We have cars, we have our own car. We don't have to share. We just hop in and go. If it's, you know, like three-quarters a mile away, we think nothing of it. It's a big deal for them. And their banks are even further away. Also consider the extreme heat we just witnessed. If people are in public transportation, riding buses, taking multiple changes at bus stops to get to their banking services outside of their community, they are out there in that heat for possibly hours to do a simple banking transaction. There is a need for brick-and-mortar banks in resource deserts, and there is a very much need for Cal accounts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is not on the list in the room that would like to testify today? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move to the Los Angeles location, where SEIU has graciously gathered members there. They will begin speaking. I believe Trinity's there. Trinity, what we'll do is we'll have two minutes for non-interpreted services, four minutes for appropriate services. We will mute at the two-minute mark, so that, since you don't have a timer in the room, and then the next person can come on. Trinity, you'll have to unmute yourself on your side.
Everyone, go ahead. I turned that off. Sorry, give us one second. It's not working. You're, you're, you're gonna stand right here, right here. We're gonna go right here. Okay. Question? Sorry, thank you for the patience. Good afternoon. I'm Trinity Metrano. Here at SEIU 2015 in Los Angeles. And we are joined here today by sixty union members and community members, some in the screen, some on the periphery. So we have about eight speakers, I believe, eight or so speakers, and then we've got several me-tos. So I'll just go ahead, I'll start my comment, and then I'm gonna hand it over to you. So, do you want to start?
Good afternoon. My name is Latonya Bailey. I've been a home care worker with SEIU 2015 since nineteen ninety-four, thirty years of service. Every month I struggle to get money to pay my rent. Bank of America charges me like ten to fifteen dollars each time I withdraw money from another bank because I have, because they have closed many ATMs in Long Beach, California. And I'm also charged sixteen dollars for cashier's check and thirty-five dollars for overdraft fees. These fees and closures are very inconvenient and unfairly penalize me for basic banking services that I need. This is why workers like me need the Cal account program so that we do not have to struggle to live... so that we do not have to struggle to live our lives every day. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, soy María Franco, vivo en Los Ángeles, trabajo en Los Ángeles. Y yo no tengo muy buena experiencia con los grandes bancos porque a veces cobran algunos bancos.
Señora, señora, le voy a pedir que haga oraciones cortas para que yo pueda interpretarle con mayor precisión, ¿ya? Voy a interpretar lo que acaba de decir. Hi, my name is María Franco, I live in Los Angeles, and I don't have a good experience with big banks. Vaya, señora, adelante. Continúe, continúe.
A nosotros, muchos, muchos de nosotros hemos tenido que sufrir esta vida que está... En algunas ocasiones, a mí me han cobrado 36 dólares por fondos insuficientes, por algunos sobregiros de mínimos que son como entre $5 y $17 en un solo día. He pagado dos veces 36 dólares, me han cobrado.
Well, I have a lot of frustrations that I have to let you know. I have received charges of $36 even twice a day for overdraft, minimum overdraft, like, let's say, $5, $15, twice a day. I have been charged with $35 fee for overdraft.
Yo hubiera podido solventar algunas necesidades. No es justo que por sobregiros mínimos los bancos, los grandes bancos y sus abusos nos permitan a nosotros, mayormente a los inmigrantes y a los trabajadores de color, ahorrar.
Well, I have to tell you that we could use that money to cover other necessities. I believe that these fees for overdraft, overdrafting, it's an abuse for the big bank, especially for the big banks, especially for people like us as immigrants.
Cal account es un programa necesario para todas las familias trabajadoras.
I believe that Cal account is a very important and significant program for all working families.
Es fundamental que tengamos bancos justos, que tengamos la opción de bancos justos.
I believe that it's very fundamental if we have an option to deal with fair banks.
Para todos en California.
For all people here in California.
Cal account, Cal account es una verdadera necesidad. Les rogamos que nos apoyen.
Cal account is a real necessity for us. I beg you to support us.
Para que Cal account se haga realidad para todos los trabajadores y para todos en California.
So we could make a reality this Cal account for every working, for every worker here in California.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Luis Castro. I'm the Associate Director of Policy and Inclusive Action for the City. We are an economic justice organization and also a community development financial institution, a CDFI. We're based out of Boyle Heights. And we serve LA County residents, helping them enhance and have access to transformative capital. And we also advocate for just economic policies. I'm here today to share that we strongly support an inclusive and accessible implementation of Cal account. At Inclusive Action, every single day, we assist hundreds of micro entrepreneurs, including street vendors, as well as small business owners, with financial services and micro-business lending. Cal account is a necessary step forward for the communities that we work with every day. No fee and no minimum balance accounts are rare, and underbanked Californians pay hundreds annually in fees. Cal account will help save on these fees, significantly impacting households and reducing banking access disparities for Black, Latino, and low-income immigrants by 25% to 30% or more. That is why we're here, because we believe that Cal account, without a doubt, is a necessary step forward that provides unique opportunities for our communities to have access to a banking system that truly works for them. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Prince. I work for IHSS. I've been an in-home care worker since 1998. I've used Wells Fargo for over 15 years. Wells Fargo will charge you excessive fees. They'll hold your check for 10 days where you have no access to your money. They will take your money out of your account and pay people that you've already had discrepancies with without your knowledge. I fully support this program. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name is Javier Sarmiento. I'm a member of ACE, Alliance of California for Community Power, and I'm here in support of Cal account because the main banks, BOA, Wells Fargo, Chase, and, you know them, they always nick you with the fees, penalties, and they squeeze you every little dollar out of your pocket. So at the end of the day, you're trapped with nothing. So I believe we are on the right path to, for Cal account to be able to do business in California and all the other things. I'm happy for this, for your support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is David Tedessi. I'm the Southern California Organizer for Rise Economy. We are a statewide coalition focused on holding banks and corporations accountable for their role in building a community-centered economy. I'm here in full support of Cal account. Our coalition members are working directly with BIPOC, older moderate income, and immigrant communities to help facilitate financial stability, whether in hardship, find housing, build wealth, and work towards small business ownership or homeownership. Fortunately, one of the first steps that's often lacking in these communities is access to financial services to build out their financial profiles, establish credit, secure savings. And this lack of access renders our communities vulnerable to predatory financial services such as check catchers, payday lenders, who are at the ready to siphon even more wealth from our communities. When our communities do have access to banking services, they are provided by inadequate language services, onerous ID requirements that are certain folks formerly incarcerated, unhoused, exiting the circuit, or that are undocumented, saddled with absorbent junk fees, and unreasonable vote difference requirements that are removed from the original books or living paycheck. My family's experience navigating financial services both as immigrants and as Black folks illuminated my understanding of these barriers. I was a caregiver, my brother was a smaller San Bernardino, and he regularly faced at banks whenever he had trouble with his customers. There was this belief that a customer that would get a check for $5,000, and this was despite his record or existing relationship with banks. And many of us would implicitly understand this as racism, but because it's hard to believe that a customer would face the same kind of scrutiny. But experiences and our community subsequent mistrust of financial institutions explained away as irrational fears of institutions, an affinity for statutory paternity waiver mattresses, or some other racist stereotype that exists to obscure systemic discrimination, financial exclusion. It's clear that we need a change in the status quo. Cal account serves as a clear solution to these issues by providing fair and equitable access to banking services. This is good and necessary policy. And as Rand Roper confirms, it's not only feasible, but it is effective in reducing disparities in access to banking for BIPOC and low-income Californians. So thank you.
Thanks, Trinity.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Willa Catolo, and I'm a member of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and representing the County Norman Transgender Power Center of West Hollywood today. And I want to express my full support of Cal account. I know too many trans siblings, younger and older, that are still facing barriers, no way of discrimination, lack of financial literacy when it comes to navigating corporate banking systems. And having something provided by the state that is safe, that is insured, and accessible for everyone is vital for the advancement of our communities. If people don't have to worry about making a light bill, securing housing, they're able to engage more with the communities around them, uplift their neighbors, and advocate for themselves. So, yeah, I express my full support for Cal account, and I hope you all do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Willa.
Hello, my name is Laura Martinez. I'm from Region 2 with the SEIU Union in San Bernardino County. My thing that I want to present today is the low-income families. When they have bank accounts and they get unexpected charges, they get charged overdraft fees per action, like if $1, they charge $1, $2, $5, $20. And if there's not sufficient funds, they will pay $35 overdraft, and then the overdraft keep going higher if it's multiple per day. If they don't pay the overdraft in the balance that they owe, more charges will be put on top of those overdraft charges, and this becomes a financial hardship for them since they don't have the money to cover their necessities every day. They end up closing their bank accounts due to that hardship. Another issue is that a lot of the people that work with SEIU, they work with, we also work with IHSS, which is a caregiver's long-term care. They have retired people, and they collect social security and disability income. And the banks are charging them also money to deposit, to checks into their accounts every month. And they also have direct deposits. So some banks do charge that fee, some others don't. Another experience that we have talked about is that when people travel outside the area where they open their bank account, if they put money into their account to cover some expenses for the trip, the money is not available immediately. They will have to wait another 24 hours. And if they have an emergency, that will cause some issues. They may need food or shelter to pay a hotel. So we need accessible accounts and Cal access may be the solution for a lot of people in the low-income communities. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Palagaro. I am a payments consultant with Retail Payments Global Consulting Group. We work with a lot of Fortune 2000 types, especially those who are merchants, many of which in Silicon Valley, for optimizing their interchange costs. I also am a member of the California Public Banking Alliance, and I fully support Cal account. By giving folks free access to their money, Cal account promises to simultaneously make life easier for those who need this program, while injecting about $5 billion into our economy and saving Californians about $3.1 billion annually. By mandating participation in instant payment services like FedNow, Same-day CH, and debit card access, Cal account will help people access their funds quickly, safely, and without penalty. We currently live in a world where banks and credit unions are prioritizing adequate deposit holders to increase their lending activity. Many of the commenters asking for this program already bank with the big five banks. And so there is a clear gap in what the private market is doing to service these customers and these resident needs. And there's considerable market power that Cal account can use to maximize returns to California taxpayers. This program is being proposed to be funded through debit card interchange, where co-branded card issuers are already used to paying $100 to $300 per new account opening. So for instance, if you have a Southwest Chase card, Southwest got paid a bounty for signing you up. If designed properly, Cal account will provide a wide deposit base to partners that are already used to paying for new customer acquisition. And this is going to create a win-win scenario for both the partners that this program works with, as well as the low-income folks that will benefit from this.
Hello, good afternoon, members. My name is Victor Gómez Ovias, and I am a recent UCLA graduate, as well as a proud immigrant to this country. And I am here today to voice my strong support for the Cal account program. As someone who has experienced firsthand the challenges of navigating the current financial systems as an immigrant, I can attest to the critical need for accessible and affordable banking options. Growing up, my family relied on many alternative financial services that many of the community members have already shared, such as check cashing services at our local ayate and payday lenders, which charge exorbitant fees that ate into our already limited income. These services weren't just expensive, but they were also stressful and time-consuming for a working-class family. For my community, the benefits extend beyond just one individual. Many Latino and immigrant families are unbanked or underbanked, leading to financial exclusion and vulnerability. Cal account, but Cal account can bridge this gap. Offering a safe and trustworthy option for managing money, this program can empower families like mine by increasing financial literacy, fostering economic participation, and promoting social inclusion. And that is why I urge you to support this initiative and help us build a more equitable financial future for all Californians. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. So we actually had several me-tos, but it's been a long commission hearing, and many of the workers had to go back to work. So I'm going to be the last comment here in Los Angeles. So I'm at Trinity Tran with California Public Banking Alliance and Public Bank L.A. and expressing our strong support for the Cal account program. As a Cal account market analysis study confirms, it confirms what we've long known over the past two years through the community input that we've received throughout this whole commission process, that the unbanked and underbanked Californians, especially Black and Brown and low-income residents, desperately need Cal account. As we've heard through many of the testimonials today and through the course of the last year or so, it will reduce disparities to access and banking for marginalized communities, as well as the economic impact to the economy is something that's important to know. That Cal account will save Californians over $3 billion annually while generating $5 billion in economic activity. And we know that the community outreach portion of this will be a critical part to ensure that the sign-ons and participation are going to be an important part to make this program successful. So we look forward to working with SEIU California and its 700,000 members, along with labor and community partners across the state to bring this program to scale and ensure maximum impact for California's working families. We really have a historic opportunity in front of us to provide essential services to the people and to reorient banking as a public service to improve the everyday lives of millions of Californians. And we look forward to working on the implementation details of this program to bring real transformative change to our financial system. Thank you. Thank you, SEIU 2015. Thanks, Cal account commissioners.
Conference room is muted.
Conference room is muted.
I found the magic button, I'm so sorry. Mr. Brown, what about next?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, my name is Nick Brown, founder of Clear Purchase. This will be a little different. There was a lot of talk in the meeting today about debit cards and card processing. Well, I built a lot of that infrastructure. I'm a super geek in the payment infrastructure world. All of the massive behind-the-scenes systems that are processing credit and debit card transactions. And I even actually built Visa's global debit card system in 1996. The reason I'm saying all of that is I know what it takes to make systems work, to make infrastructure work. I know what you can do in it and what you can't. Coming back to the report, one of the issues that I see is a lot of undocumented people in this country. They don't trust the banks because of the federal KYC regulations, no, your customer regulations. They don't want to tell the bank who they are because the banks are forced to tell the Federal Reserve and others that you have an account there. They don't trust the banks and that's actually not one of the times when it's the bank's fault. However, I mean the unfortunate thing is that the existing banking and payment infrastructure is not suitable for undocumented people in this country. But you have put legislation in place, AB 1177, an earlier one in 2019, AB 857, which is public banks. You've got legislation in place, you've got oversight in place to be able to actually offer accounts that can be free to every undocumented person in this state. And I have the technical ability to build those components that need to be created and integrate them with existing banking and federal infrastructure. That is viable, there is a complete solution here depending on how far you want to go down this. But I have the technical ability to build that kind of infrastructure and build those systems. So that is something to think, you know, I'm available if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Brandon Dawkins.
Hi, good evening everybody, I am Brandon Dawkins, I am the Vice President of Organizing for SEIU Local 1021 out of the San Francisco Bay Area. And the reason why Cal account is very important to our members is because we have a lot of members who are, you know, not only on the low wage pay scale but also underbanked. And you know, when it comes to check cashing, you know, a lot of our workers, you know, whether it's Fast Food workers, whether it's Starbucks workers, whether it's gig workers, Uber, Lyft drivers, a lot of these workers, you know, when they go to cash a check at a bank and if they have to pay rent, banks like Wells Fargo charge $10 for a cashier's check because that's what a lot of landlords want is they want cashier's checks. Or a bank even, you know, also charges, you know, up to $10 just to cash a check. And if they can't cash a check at a bank, they will go to a cash checking center. And we already know those, you know, rates are, you know, skyrocketing. In addition to that, if they can't even cashier check at a check cashing center, they will go to a corner store and a corner store will charge up to $25 just to cash a check. So with Cal account, what that does is that puts a level playing field in the banking arena so that no matter who you are, no matter what you look like, no matter where you work, no matter what your status is, everybody have the access and the opportunity to bank without those exuberant fees. They'll be able to pay their rent without paying $10, $15 for a money order or a check. So we need to make banking affordable for everyone regardless of who you are and what you look like. And this is why we support Cal account and we're asking for everybody else to support Cal account too because we need public banking, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Elias Garcia, Elias.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Elias Garcia. I'm speaking on behalf of the California Community Economic Development Association, or SECA. We are an organization based in Los Angeles that includes a membership of over 200 nonprofit community-based economic development organizations across the state of California that work to address the needs of low-income communities and communities of color. These organizations run a variety of anti-poverty programs such as food banks, work training, affordable housing and small business assistance. We are speaking in strong support of the Cal account program today. I know firsthand the struggles of being unbanked, underbanked and exploited by predatory banking practices. I can remember the unbearable anxiety of seeing overdraft fees of $50 applied to my account with each passing day that I was unable to bring my account back into the green. This often started with an overdraft of less than $10 and resulted in debts of over 100. The RAN report noted a strong correlation between population count and branch density with less densely populated areas having much less accessible branches. This negative reflects residents in California's low-income rural communities and Native American communities with many having to travel over 10 miles by foot or public transit to reach a branch. California is not just made up of only metropolitan cities and these rural communities, many of which are farm-working communities who are essential to the state economy, deserve access to affordable banking services. In addition to distance from physical branches, fees serve as another barrier to low-income Californians. Between travel to branches, monthly fees, check cashing fees and overdraft fees, low-income Californians are having to spend inordinate amounts of money to access their own funds, sometimes amounting to over an hour's worth of wages. This relegates these residents to the secondary market of predatory non-bank financial services which keeps low-income Californians trapped from advancing economically and which keeps the state from seeing the benefits of the $5 billion in activity that Cal account will generate in the state's economy. So I hope you support Cal account, we strongly support it.
Thank you. And our last online speaker is Nabila Dunbar, Nabila, to you.
Thank you, thank you so much Commissioners, good evening to everyone. My name is Nabila Dunbar, I'm the Director of Advocacy and Engagement at the National Council Jewish Women LA. Our work centers on ensuring economic justice and equity for women in Los Angeles through direct cash assistance known as guaranteed income, skill building and advocating for policies that safeguard women's financial stability and prosperity. Many of our clients, the many of the clients that we serve across our various programs are unbanked and underbanked. So this issue is really important to us. In our state, many individuals like access to traditional banking services driven by various barriers, including geographic, economic and digital divides. Rural areas and low-income urban neighborhoods often lack adequate banking facilities, leaving many without the basic financial services that many of us take for granted. Hurdles such as improper identification, procredit history or past banking issues further exclude individuals from opening accounts. As this, the results are that folks that are underbanked and unbanked are forced to rely on the alternative financial services such as the stories that we heard from many of the folks in the call. These include cash checking systems, payday loans and money orders. These services come with steep fees and interest rates that trap individuals in the cycles of debt and financial instability. We hope that you consider the report findings and you begin to lay the foundation to ensure that we can close the gap and that we really begin to think about the shared prosperity that all Californians should be part of. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
You have zero questions remaining.
Okay. Thank you so much to Cassandra for helping to mediate all the questions in the room in Los Angeles, virtually and on the phone. Any additional questions or comments from the Commissioners? As of the public comment, I would open that up. Okay. If not, I do want to give a huge thanks to our interpreter who was participating in line and incredible value and incredible help. Thank you so much to the Blue Ribbon Commission team, to Cassandra and Mariah. Thank you so much to those that attended and provided public comment, we appreciate you. And of course, thank you so much to our Commissioners. We have definitely deliberations to talk about and to think about next steps on behalf of the California State Treasurer's Office and our State Treasurer Fiona Ma. It is approximately 3:47 PM and this meeting is adjourned, thank you.